We'll call this meeting a Fairfield County Council order, Monday, February 12, 2018, at 6:00 PM. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Those opposed, seven and zero. The agenda is approved as presented. We're now down to the invocation. Councilmember Robinson, please.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, once again, the citizens of Fairfield County have gathered for the betterment of our home. Father God, I'm asking you to bless the ones that have made it, and then continue to bless the ones that were unable to make it. Most of all, Father, I ask you to bless our families that along with this journey with us. Last but not least, Father God, bless this council to have a giving heart of unity and make decisions that are in the best interest for the county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Now down to the approval of minutes. We have two to approve tonight, unless there are any questions or comments about specific ones, we'll do them together. Regular meeting from January 22, 2018, as presented, and the special meeting, January 29, 2018, as presented. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Those opposed, seven and zero. The minutes from the regular meeting, January 22, 2018, and the special meeting from January 29, 2018, are approved as presented. Public presentations, we have none tonight. First public comment session, Mrs. Davis, if you would.
We have three to speak tonight. First, Ms. Peggy Swearingen, speaking on EMS salaries.
My name is Peggy Swearingen. I'm from District 3, and tonight I want to speak about the EMS salaries. I do believe that our EMS personnel need to be compensated for their jobs. Last year's council voted to increase the sheriff's office, the 911, and EMS to make their salaries more in line with the other county's salaries. EMS has come back again, asking you once again for another pay increase. Have you compared their present salaries with other counties' our size? Number of calls, work schedules, job descriptions, all of these impact pay. Is our inability to hire due to the pay or some other problem with this county? I have given you copies of the median salaries across the state. You'll see that paramedic median salary is 42, 653. I have also given you a present job opening that is in Fairfield County. Both of these were printed today, and that job opening is for a paramedic, $45,000 to $48,000. Also, the requirement's for you to operate an ambulance. You do not have to be a paramedic to operate an ambulance. If you can find the money to give these people a raise, which I think everybody needs a cost of living raise, but I ask you to try to find some money, extra money, to give us paid firemen out in the county. Please, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on COG and more.
Shirley Green, District 2, Ridgeway. Tonight, a vote will take place that raises a few eyebrows. Eyebrows are raised not regarding the appointee's qualifications, but the ethical situation of a councilperson appointing his landlord to Central Midlands Council of Government. Others feel that more than one councilman should recuse himself from voting on the appointment. We heard at the last county council meeting that only one councilperson and the Fairfield County manager had seen the deed that transferred Mount Zion to Fairfield County before the vote was taken at the meeting. I have a rubber stamp, everybody. You can use this rubber stamp if you choose not to debate and deliberate ethical ramifications of your decisions. On a brighter note, to Mr. Davenport, we are happy to hear that there's some good economic development news, and the second reading of ordinance number 694. We're happy to see that a company plans to buy the spec building. I'm also happy that you'll accept the deed to Garden Street Park and look forward to Fortune Springs Pool renovations in conjunction with the town of Wentzboro. I think those are positive steps to keep our children active and engaged. I hope the contractual arrangement and zoning reclassification with tax map number 138-0002-04500 will result in a business opportunity for Weston Fairfield County.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Angela Young, speaking on the Bishop Squirewell property.
Good evening. My name is Angela Young. I'm in District 1. I'm here today to get some property rezoned that I purchased, never knowing that it had already been rezoned different from what it used to be. I'm out of state, coming back home after 48 years, and I had no idea that the property had been rezoned at 229 Bishop Squirewell Road in Ridgeway. And when I went to inquire about it, I went to the zoning office. They told me I had to go to the assessment office. I went to the assessment office, paid all the taxes that needed paying, and they gave me a moving permit to move a mobile home onto the property. When I went there, paid that, they say, well, you have to go back to the zoning place, and I did, and they told me I had to go to the DMV to get the mobile home registered in my name. I did that, and said, come back once I got the paper from the DMV, which I did, and I took it back, and they told me that the property had been rezoned and no mobile home was allowed on it. I went through all the process of doing what I was told to get the property, and just to find out that I haven't been able to move, live on the property, and it was purchased September 22, 2017. I'm sorry, 2016. And I moved, and I went on and moved the mobile home onto it before I went back to the zoning place to tell me that it was there illegal. I mean, all the processes I went through, no one never told me that that property had been rezoned since 2012. And I'm here to try to get it rezoned back because I bought the property to put a mobile home on, and the assessment office knew that because they gave me the moving permit for it. And I would like for you all to rezonate back because that's the only place I have to live. I've been living with my nephew, my sister, back and forth, and I've never lived this way, and I want to be on my own again. And I'd make that property decent. I'm not there to destroy it. It's not a lot of property, but it's the property that I own, and I'm hoping that everyone understands where I'm coming from. I've been gone 48 years from South Carolina. I left when I was 17, came back when I was 65 years old, and I bought the property to move the mobile home onto so I could be on my own again. And I appreciate any thoughts, any things that you think you could help me get this settled in the process, because right now, I'm living with my sister, and she's tired of me, and I'm tired of her. We love each other, but, you know, when you live, she lives by herself, and I live by myself, and I never live with anyone until I move back home. So I'm asking you to do the best you can to help me get back on my own, on that property. Everything's there. I bought the property, cleaned it off, had the electrical poles put up, had it zoned and everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes Segment 1.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We're now down to public hearings. We have two for tonight. Item A is to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD1 to B1 of 18.22 acres owned by Wendy Bracewell, tax map number 138-00-02-045-000. Property is located at 5264 State Highway 215 South in Jenkinsville. We'll open this public hearing at 6:09 PM on Monday, February 12. Do we have anybody signed to speak?
We have one speaker, Ms. Wendy Bracewell.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Bracewell. I'm obviously Fairfield County and it's District 4 under Ms. Bertha. I'm not really good at this, and I'm a little nervous about standing up here and talking. I'm actually pretty good at doing it in corporate America, but not when it's so close to my heart. For those of you that don't know, the property that we're talking about here at 5264, it's known to most people around here as the Robinson House. It was registered on the National Registry as the Davis Plantation. The house was actually built around 1810, so it's a little over 200 years old, and it is on the Historic Registry. It's the place where the first Brahmin cattle were brought into the U.S., as well as the first cashmere goats. It's tied very heavily to Furman University in that the Davis family, the family that built the house, both of the daughters that lived there actually were married to Furmans, and Furman's Alumni House, Cherry Dell, is actually modeled after our house. Some of the people that we've been working with on this rezon, as well as the venue plans that we're talking about, are from Furman and the Historic Preservation Society, so you'll hear me refer to them a little bit. That's the house. About me, I am a history lover. That's how I ended up in that house. I saw it on RealEstate.com, fell in love with it, and it has kind of been a love-hate relationship ever since then. My family goes way back in terms of doing historic restorations, primarily in the Baltimore and Falls Point area, but also some in Atlanta. One thing that I just want to make, I guess, really clear, I've had a lot of people make comments to me, we're not independent wealthy, independently wealthy. We didn't come over from England with a lot of money. There's a lot of things that are floating around. My husband is, in fact, from England. He's been in the U.S. now four years. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia, and I've been here my whole entire life. One of the things that has come up with this whole rezoning is that the house must produce income. And the reason I say that, this house, 200 years old, the amount of maintenance that's required, the amount of money that has to go into it on a monthly basis, it's astronomical. So either somebody that is super independently wealthy is going to have to buy it to maintain it, or it's going to have to be income-producing to restore and preserve itself, and that's one of the reasons I want to do the wedding venue. So what we're asking for is a rezon. We're asking for a rezoned business. It's so that we can do a wedding venue. We absolutely have to have that rezoned for four main reasons. One is that we want to do a public eating place. Two is a public drinking place. Three is that the historic tax credits do require it to be commercial for them to apply. And four, the funding and the venue funding that I'm looking at, the banking, Small Business Administration underwritten requires that the property be zoned commercial as well. So I greatly appreciate any consideration you can give, and I will happily answer any questions anyone has. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Mrs. Davis?
That's all.
All right. Okay, we'll now take a motion at 6:13 PM, Monday, February 12, to close this public hearing.
Seconded.
We've had a motion to, a motion and second to close the public hearing. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed, that public hearing's now closed. We now have a second one, to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 to RD1 of .036 acres owned by Angela Young, tax map number 186-02-04-007-000. Property is located at 229 Bishop Squirewell, Ridgeway, South Carolina. We'll open this public hearing at 6:14 PM on Monday, February 12. Do we have anyone signed to speak, Mrs. Davis?
No one signed to speak.
All right. We'll now take a motion at 6:14, Monday, February 12, to close this public hearing. It's been moved and properly seconded. The council do now close the public hearing. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, seven and zero. That public hearing is closed. We're now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Second reading of ordinance number 692, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, ordinance number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from RD1 to B1 of 18.22 acres owned by Wendy Bracewell, tax map number 138-00-02-045-000. Property is located at 5264 State Highway 215 South in Jenkinsville. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council provides second reading to ordinance number 692. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Paulie.
Is the property currently up for sale?
I'd have to defer to the owner. I don't know.
Okay. And I'm also concerned about the precedent that this might set if we rezoned this for limited business use. The zoning she has now will already allow what she has stated she wants to use the property. Also note that giving her a B1 zoning would allow a strip mall to go on the property. I'm not implying that she wants to do that, but just in the sake of setting a precedent, just in case someone else wanted to do it.
Mr. Taylor, any staff members have comments on that?
Yes, Tim Roseborough, our planning commissioner or director. If you could comment on the conditional business use of the property, that it wouldn't be just a blanket allowance for that, as I understand it. And also, I think there's some concern as far as the R1 allowing it as she's presenting it now.
The question on whether she can, if we rezoned the property to B1, it's not, a strip mall will not be able to be developed there without it going back through the planning commission. So that's the safeguard that we have. Any development that someone else may decide to use the B1 for, it would have to go back through the planning commission. And if it goes through the planning commission, it has to go through, we have to do a public hearing, and all the surrounding property owners would have to be notified. So that's the safeguard that we have with limited business.
Any questions? More questions?
I noticed in the resolution book, B1 will allow a eating place, RD1 will not allow it. Special food service is not allowed in RD1, but it is allowed in B1. And if you have a drink, and you can actually have your drink and parties there, too. This is an event center, and you have to have those things in order to have an event center. And there's nothing wrong with her having a business there because the western side of Fairfield County needs to have a little more notoriety and people coming there.
Mr. Chairman, the Farms of Ridgeway, is that zone the same as what Ms. Bracewell will be? Are you familiar?
No, sir.
The Farms of Ridgeway?
No, sir. It's zone RD1.
Okay. And it's a wedding venue?
Yes, sir. It's a wedding venue.
And multiple, okay.
From my understanding, you're saying with this rezoning, that there is a protective cover. It will go back to the public hearing, it would have to then, back to the same process that she's actually doing now, the next owner would have to do the same thing?
Yes, ma'am. Except, come before the county council, because it's land development.
Okay. And yes, I'm in agreement. Western Fairfield needs development. It needs, and I like the idea of a high-scale venue coming in. That's awesome.
Mr. Roseborough, could you explain to us a little bit more if someone did want to open a retail establishment there within the B1 classification of zoning, if they already had that zoning, the process by which they would have to go through before that were approved?
They would have to submit a development, site plans and development plans to the building department. Once they submit their plans to the building department, the zoning administrator, which is myself, we would take it before the planning commission. Once we, and in order to take it before the planning commission, we would have to have a public hearing, and the property would have to be posted, and the surrounding property owners would have to be notified.
Okay.
So that's the safeguard.
So let me ask you this. What would, if that request went to the planning commission, would they be considering, I mean, they wouldn't be considering whether it was permitted, because it was, it would already be permitted within B1, correct? So what would the specific question at that time for the planning commission be? Would it be for them to allow or disallow that specific use, depending upon the building plan, or how would that? What is the essential question that they would actually be getting at? Because it will already allow within that area something such as a retail establishment, if it were B1. So what is the individual question they would actually be seeking to answer or to vote up or down on the planning commission at that time?
The actual development. They would vote up and down on the development. If enough property owners would, you know, come out and voice their opinion, the planning commission would, you know, have the authority to vote it down.
So legally, would they be able to look upon that with prejudice just for the fact that it were a retail establishment, when a retail establishment would be allowed within that zoning classification?
If a retail establishment is allowed in that zoning classification, I'm thinking that it would be still their prerogative to vote it up or down.
Okay. I appreciate that. Could we also ask Mr. Morgan if you could, if you're knowledgeable about that, if you could, I don't distrust that, but just verify legally about how that would work? Would that be the case, that they would still? I just wonder if, you know, if somebody brought forward a retail establishment, which is allowed in B1, if the planning commission, you know, we say that they'd be able to vote that up or down, but would that easily open them up to a lawsuit saying that they looked upon that with prejudice and that it was already allowed in that area, and they shouldn't have ruled that way? That's what I'm curious about.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think, excuse me, sorry. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I think what happens at that point in time is, as Mr. Roseborough has indicated, the site plans would be brought forward to the planning commission, and it would be the determination of the plans and whether or not that they are compatible with the overall planning and comprehensive plan at that point in time. Because as the chairman's indicated, the B1 under the table of uses, there's, you go through and you can check and make sure that certain uses are authorized, be it RD1, R1, B1, light industrial, so on and so forth. At that point in time, the, once it's been zoned, the use has been established, whether or not the site plans, as for the specific installation or the business itself, fits and comports. That would be what would be before the planning commission.
So then my question would be that you could, the planning commission would not really at that time be able to just blanket turn down any retail establishment because it is already allowed within that zoning classification, correct?
As long as, correct, Mr. Chairman. As long as it falls underneath the table of uses, then that is correct.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Roseborough and Mr. Morgan. I don't know if any other, no, ma'am. We just can't, within the rules. I apologize. I don't know if any other council members have questions for Mr. Morgan or for Mr. Roseborough while they're at the microphones, but I would just say that, you know, I would love to see the use that Mrs. Bracewell is discussing being put in this location. It's other things that worry me, and it's the precedent that worries me. That said, I know that we're looking at other options of maybe a way to make it possible and working with Ms. Bracewell, and I appreciate the cooperation, both from staff and from the petitioner, to have this zoning changed. So at this time, I'm going to vote in favor of it, just to make sure that we move it on the third reading in hopes that we can get something done between now and the next reading to be able to account for all these things and make sure that folks are comforted in the sense of the precedent that sets and what could go there in the future. Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I think this would be awesome for the county, and I really do. I think it would be a great economic boost, and especially to the western part of the county. And I think I'd mention to Mr. Taylor about, and maybe this is what you're inferring, that could there be a covenant attached to it to prevent strip mall, anything that is, I don't think, not in any of your plans, but just down the road if it were purchased by someone else, so that it would protect that, but allow this.
And those are the things we're looking at. Whether it's a planned development district or a covenant or something like that, that we could explore in putting on the property to assure that something bad in the future doesn't happen, but allows this good use to go forward.
Any other questions or comments on this from council? Mrs. Goins?
And I, too, definitely will vote yes on this, that it moves forward and do whatever I can to support it and help this happen.
Thank you very much.
I would hope that several more places want to open up in Western Fairfield County and half more retail businesses.
Right, just in the correct locations.
Just a beginning.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions or comments from council member, we'll take a vote at this time. Those in favor of providing second reading to ordinance number 692? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven and zero. Second reading is provided to ordinance number 692. We're now down to item B, second reading, ordinance number 693, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, ordinance number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 to RD1 of .036 acres owned by Angela Young, tax map number 186-02-04-007-000. Property is located at 229 Bishop Squirewell, Ridgeway, South Carolina. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council provides second reading to ordinance number 693. Do we have any discussion? All right. I'd like to just inquire if we could, I don't know, Mr. Taylor, if you're aware of this, or if Mr. Roseborough would be, and I trust what Mrs. Young said to us, but just to verify, I want to make sure that she was able to get throughout the process with the county as far as she was, and then we let her know that that was not an acceptable use in that zoning classification. It just concerns me that we would have let it go on that far without picking up on that. So I wanted to ask that question.
I was unaware of that, and it concerned me also. Tim, can you comment on that?
Yes, I can comment. Ms. Young did come to, well, she stopped by our office and inquired about a moving permit for her mobile home. We sent her to the tax assessor. She went to the tax assessor to get the moving permit. When she came back to the office, we told her that she needed to have the title converted into her name. She went to the DMV, had the title converted into her name. And when she returned, that's when we had informed her that the parcel had been rezoned to R1 instead of RD1. And we told her she had to apply for a rezon in order to place the mobile home there, but she had already placed it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't know if any other council members have questions, comments? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I talked to Ms. Young several times about this, and she went through, jumped through a lot of hoops getting to the point she got to, and also the planning and zoning board passed this forward also, and so I'm fully in favor of her keeping that mobile home there and moving on with her life. So I think there may have been some, I don't know what happened, but where we are now, I think we need to move on and let her stay where she is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roof. Anyone else? Mr. Paulie?
I want to say welcome back to Fairfield County.
Any other questions or comments?
I want to comment. I am so sorry that you had to go through so much, but I'm glad that it worked in your favor.
Let me just, I'll just add that we've, you know, we've heard a couple of these type things in the past where we, folks wanted to rezon something for the purpose of a mobile home. Sometimes we've allowed them to do that, sometimes we have not, based on the zoning and the type of area that would create, maybe an isolated zoning area that I think this would, and I generally would look upon this, not in a favorable way. That said, I think there are a couple of extenuating circumstances here. You know, one is that the property was rezoned. That sometimes happened where we, you know, we have a property that's Um, that sometimes happen where we, you know, we have a property that's rezoned and folks don't know about it and kind of causes some problems. And I've supported that in the past when someone asked the question. And also I, I do think that, and I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, but I think when folks come in, the, the Planning and Zoning Office, that we need to make sure the first time they come in that we check those sort of things and, and not let it go to two and three times down the road. Um, so based on those extenuating circumstances, I certainly am in favor of providing second reading and, and will vote in, uh, support of providing third reading at the next meeting for this ordinance. Any other discussion, comments? All right, the motion's been made and properly seconded to provide second reading to ordinance number 693. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Second reading has been provided to ordinance number 693. Thank you very much. Um, we're now down to second reading for ordinance number 694. An ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to convey all or a portion of county-owned real property located at 355 Commerce Boulevard Ridgeway, South Carolina, 29130, with tax map TMS 184 dash 00 dash 00 dash 071 dash 000 to CS Industrial LLC. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that council do provide second reading to ordinance number 694. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of providing second reading to ordinance number 694? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Second reading is provided to ordinance number 694. We're now down to board and commission minutes. We have two for tonight unless there are any questions or comments on specific ones. We'll do both of these at once. We have Disabilities and Special Needs Board minutes and Hospital Board minutes as well. It's been moved and properly seconded to, um, to approve the minutes as presented from the Disabilities and Special Needs Board and the Hospital Board. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Those minutes are approved as presented. We're now down to board and commission appointments. Uh, item A is Aeronautics Commission, Ms. Donna J. Minor, District 4.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded to appoint Mrs. Donna J. Minor from District 4 to the Aeronautics Commission. Any discussion?
Discussion, but I'm not familiar with her, if you don't mind if she's here.
She said that she, um, wanted to. She always was interested in people flying in airplanes and stuff and she was wanting to get on the airplane. So I don't know.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Ms. Minor is now on the Aeronautics Commission. Item B, Aeronautics Commission, Mr. Benjamin Provo, District 2.
Mr. Provo owns, uh...
We need a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded to appoint Mr. Provo, District 2, to the Aeronautics Commission. Any discussion? Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Provo owns airplanes, piloting aircraft, he knows what's going on, he'd be good to have him on the mission.
All right. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Thank you very much. Those in favor of putting Mr. Ben- uh, Benjamin Provo, District 2, on the Aeronautics Commission? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Mr. Benjamin Provo has been appointed to the Aeronautics Commission. At this time, um, I'm going to be stepping out of the room. I have a conflict of interest as I rent a property from the person that the council is considering appointing to the Central Midlands Council of Government. Um, I filed my potential conflict of interest statement with the clerk and that is on file if anyone wants to see it. We'll be in the minutes for this meeting. This time I'll walk out and give the gavel to Ms. Goins for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have boards and commission appointments, Central Midlands Council of Government, Ms. Wanda Khan. Make here a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Wanda Khan as on the Central Midlands Council of Government.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The motion has been moved and, and has been motioned and granted by, let me make sure we got here, five to one. The motion has been granted by five to one. Okay, at this time, we return the remaining of the meeting back over to our chairman.
All right, we are now down to old business, there is none, new business presentation of fiscal year 2016-17 audit by Elias Dave- Elliot Davis DeCosma.
Brian D'Amico here, who will be giving a presentation, uh, on our audit. Thank you for having me here this evening. Um, I, I provided printout, so in case you want to flip along during the presentation, there are some numbers. What is different this year is that, um, this is more of an update on the audit process. Um, there are some pending, um, legal issues that we're still working through, still getting clarification on. So the audit is not finalized, um, but I wanted to give you, um, an overall update of the process, um, and provide, uh, some results, um, you know, uh, going back to fiscal year 17. So, um, as always, please, um, let me know if you've got any questions. Um, I want to keep the financial information at a high level, um, but I'd, you know, be happy to dive into any details. So, um, again, my name's Brian D'Amico. I've, I've been here a couple of years now, but just to remind everybody, I'm out of our Columbia, um, office. Um, I work primarily on governmental audits and, um, you know, have been your audit shareholder for the last couple of years. Flipping to the first page, um, first slide, um, what this presents, um, it's the statement of net position and the, the two main numbers on that, um, statement is the overall net position. So that's going to be, um, i- if you own any businesses, that's going to be your equity. Um, and your governmental activity statement's going to include all your capital assets and all your long-term debt. So basically, assets minus liabilities, uh, for the last two years, um, the county has, um, you know, showed, uh, some significant balances. Um, so if you look on the page, 2017, the net position ended at 39, just over 39 million, um, up from 33 million in the previous year. So, um, what, uh, what happened, um, was a over $6 million positive change to net position. Um, so given the, uh, infrastructure capital improvements that you've done for the county, um, that's, uh, that's a very positive, uh, financial result. Flipping to the next page, um, it's, uh, your, your fund balance and your, your, off your fund statements. So similar concept, assets minus liabilities, um, but this is where, uh, you're really just tracking the inflows and outflows of the county's operations. You're not including your long-term assets, you're not including your long-term liabilities. Um, so essentially, it's a very similar number to the original, uh, to the number on the previous sheet. And how that happens is that your capital assets and your debt are, are somewhat equal, um, on your balance sheet and almost offset, and that's the primary reconciling item on your, um, governmental activity statement. Not to alarm everybody, um, the negative change in fund balance is primarily related to the capital assets, um, additions that you have, uh, made out of the Facilities Corporation. Um, so if you remember, um, and, and I'll show this in, in a couple of slides, but just to, to give you a little preview on it, um, your fund statements are going to show inflows and outflows. So when you got those bond proceeds in the Facilities Corp several years ago, it showed a extremely large, uh, positive change in fund balance. But over the years, when you're spending that, uh, money, um, you're going to consistently show a negative change. Um, on the governmental activity statement, all of those, um, all that activity is capitalized, it's shown through depreciation, much more like a for-profit business. But on your fund statements, that first year you get that bond, um, you're going to show a huge inflow and as you spend down on the money, um, you'll be showing, uh, negative changes. Flipping to the next page, uh, just to give you a detail of the various funds, um, that we've broken out and considered as major in the financial statements, um, three of which are, are similar, um, or, or have been there in the previous, uh, prior year, um, but you have a new one. The Economic Development Fund was carved out and made major this year. So that, that's new for 2017. Um, all your other funds, everything that's not listed out and broken out on that screen, um, is going to be lumped together in your non-major fund. Um, when we perform an audit, we're actually performing an audit, um, on each one of those funds. And so when we express our opinion, we're expressing an opinion on each of, uh, their activities. Showing, uh, uh, two, two, to, to point out, obviously, the general fund is the general operations of the county. Um, you know, it's up, uh, just under 22 million compared to, uh, just under 20 million last year. So again, another positive change. Um, and the Facilities Corp, it still has a remaining fund balance, um, of 10 point, uh, roughly 10.5 million. So that's essentially the leftover bond proceeds that the county or the Facilities Corp has not spent yet related to those revenue bonds that were taken out several years ago. Uh, flipping to the next slide, um, again, want to point out the positive change in the general fund and you can see that negative change in the Facilities Corp make up the majority of the activity in, uh, in the major funds for the county. Flipping over one more time, um, so this is going to be the last sort of table, um, of numbers and we'll get into more, um, just general discussion in a minute. But to break out the general fund fund balance, um, what you want to see is a large, uh, balance in your unassigned position, um, which, which the, the county, um, has. Um, unassigned means unrestricted, uh, county council can tap into that money and spend it however it may choose. Um, when you have it in the committed position or, um, non-spendable position, um, you have to have to, you have to, you know, perform an action, um, something has to happen in order for you to tap into that money. So, um, again, we want to see positive change, uh, down there in the unassigned, um, fund balance and, and you had that for 2017. On the next slide, um, is just a quick calculation and I think I've, I've shown this to y'all, um, the last couple of years, but just to prove out the math on, uh, the 2017 numbers. Um, so what we want to make sure is that the county has, you know, that unassigned fund balance, that in case of disaster, um, you know, money, um, you know, uh, slowing to the county, you know, you, you have to tap into your own, um, own resources in, in order to, um, you know, make payroll, you know, the worst-case scenario. Um, we want to measure how many months of unassigned fund balance you have available to spend in case of that, um, that scenario. So the equation basically works out to take your general fund, uh, total expenditures, uh, so for 2017, that was just over 26 million, um, divide that by 12 to get a monthly average, um, and then take that number and divide it into that unassigned fund balance. So that, taking that unassigned fund balance from the previous, um, uh, previous slide, you get just under eight months of available spending. So, um, the GFOA, um, which is a, a standard setter, so to speak, in, uh, in, in your arena, recommends to have at least two months of available spending. Um, that's a minimum threshold. So I think that's a good indicator, um, that you've set money aside, um, over the years and, and in case something happened, um, you know, and, and we all know, um, you know, things happen, um, you have some available spending to, to keep, uh, the county functioning. Next slide, um, so to talk about some negative things, um, and, and I've brought this up in the past, but, uh, while that previous slide, uh, was definitely a positive indicator, uh, something that all governmental entities are still having to, um, cope with is their net pension liability that, uh, GASB required you to record, um, several years ago. Um, that number did not go down, um, it actually went up, uh, for y'all approximately 2.5 million from 2016 to 17. So, uh, just to remind everybody, that's your proportional share of the South Carolina retirement system and the police officers retirement systems, um, uh, unfunded liability. So, uh, you know, obviously the state has, uh, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, um, in unfunded liability and GASB 68 pushes that down to all the participating employers. So, um, it's a huge number, um, it's not something that you can necessarily manage because it's, any policy change has to happen at the state level, uh, but something that has to be recognized on your financial statements. Um, a new standard that came out this year, uh, that, next slide, um, that is just pure disclosure. So we don't have to record a liability for this. It's actually not on the financial statements except for the footnotes. Um, it's GASB 77 and it relates to your tax abatements, um, that you make within the county. Um, in South Carolina, in particular in this county, you allow two different tax abatement programs that we felt met the standard of GASB 77. Um, your fee in lieu of tax agreements and your special source revenue credits. Um, what we have to disclose is just the amount that was abated in the current year. So there's no, uh, long-term disclosure that we have to make related to that number. Um, so for the fee in loews, it was 1.2 million and the special source revenue credits was just under 300,000. GASB 75 is what's coming next year. Um, unfortunately, it pretty much mirrors the standards related to pensions. Um, the main difference here, well, the main difference is it relates to your other post-employment benefits. So, um, your medical health insurance coverage that you provide to retirees. Um, the main difference is that you guys, y'all control, um, that, uh, benefit. Um, and, you know, a couple of years ago, when, uh, GASB 45 came out, um, you tweaked those benefits, um, and, and to limit our liability, limit our ultimate exposure, uh, for our retiree obligation. Um, but just to, uh, show everybody, how we previously calculated it, um, for 2017 was approximately two, 2 million, um, but under the new standards that would be applicable for next year's financial statements, uh, that same, that same benefit you're giving retirees, it's going to be more, um, closer to a $5 million number. Um, so again, main difference, can't really control the retirement system, but you could have input on, um, your, uh, net OPEB obligation. And that will, that is not reflected in the, in, in the, uh, what will be the issued, uh, 2017 numbers, but that would be applicable for next year's 2018 statements. The two reports that we always include in the back, I wanted to just give you an update on, on where we stand currently. So our yellow book report is, um, it, it's our report on internal controls over financial reporting. Um, last year, we had, uh, two findings. Um, this year, we have the same findings repeated, um, and one additional one. Um, to make sure everybody's aware, you know, we would expect findings, um, especially i- in a county, um, environment where you got a lot of, uh, different issues going on, um, uh, various, uh, you know, uh, departments and their operations, uh, but we want to see them cleared, um, you know, the next year that we come, because that's going to be the starting point for, for next year's audit. Um, I'm, I'm happy to report that IT, um, we had multiple issues last year, um, and, uh, over half of them were cleared in this current year audit. There's always a cost benefit in, in perfect world versus, you know, how do I mitigate the county's risks effectively, um, through internal controls? So, um, what I'm happy to report is that, uh, the county recognized our, our finding and is doing what it can as quickly as it can to, to mitigate those risks and to put some, some things into place.
Would you mind reminding us specifically what those were? I recall it from last year, but I don't remember exactly what the...
So there's, um, a formal plan, so a written plan on, on how we manage the IT environment. Um, and then specifically, two more significant issues are passwords, um, and, and having a, um, you know, probably some of your computers at your office, if you, uh, enter the incorrect password so many times, it locks you out, it freezes, um, there's not that lock in place, um, for logging on to the server. And then there's, um, user IDs that have administrative all-user access. Um, whenever that comes into play, we, as auditors, we never want someone to have all-user access, even, you know, they have the best intentions in the world. It help, it, it hurts, um, having that audit trail to see, okay, who, who did what and, um, uh, exactly, you know, um, put that audit trail in place so we can, um, we can tell who made a change, uh, versus who... who didn't. Those type of issues, you can't, sometimes they're not as easy as clicking a button and, and putting that on there. There's, there's valid reasons why those things are in place. We're just working to, to alleviate those or mitigate those as best, as best as you can. We continue to have this issue, and this issue hasn't just been repeated for the last two years, but multiple years. Timely review of bank reconciliations. We consider bank reconciliations one of the most important internal controls that, that any company, whether governmental or for-profit, could have. And, and any internal control is extremely important to be timely, or it doesn't really have merit to it, or, or do itself justice. So we consistently see bank reviews, bank reconciliations are ultimately done, they're just lagging way behind what we would consider a timely review process taking place. The new one for this year is related to your capital assets area. And so as I mentioned previously, through the Facilities Corp., the, the county is spending a lot more in capital improvements than it has in the past. Currently, there is one person performing all the functions related to any capital asset act being posted into the general ledger and being tracked. We always, as a general process, we always want to see at least two people touching something that's being posted to the general ledger. That would just be proper segregation of duties. So our recommendation there will be to have someone added to the process. So the person isn't just doing and no review being performed. The person actually who's doing it now would be a reviewer, and you could have someone doing the more administrative task of, of, you know, preparation and recording and tracking being done, and then, you know, you would have that review step in place. Going to the next slide, our single audit report. So whenever you meet the threshold of $750,000 or more in federal spending, you are required to have a single audit. Unfortunately, fortunately, you are just over that threshold for this past year. I think it was 770,000. So we double-checked, triple-checked the numbers to make sure that that was, that was actually the case. But we went through the process of performing the single audit. We actually had to test two programs, two that we've tested in the past. The Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act cluster and the Airport Improvement Program were both tested. We noted no findings related to either of those grants over compliance or, or any internal controls, for that matter. My last slide is just to say thank you. We appreciate working, the opportunity to work with this county. We, we value their relationship tremendously. The Finance Department, Administration, and the Treasurer's Office all do a great job in getting us what we need and, and are extremely helpful throughout the entire process. So I appreciate all that you, you all do for this county, and I'd, I'd welcome any questions.
How long has, uh, Davis been auditing Fairfield County?
It's several years.
Many years?
I couldn't, I can't...
Didn't change every so often, you know, to get a new auditor to firm in to get some fresh ideas?
It, it, it varies on perspective there. The, the SEC actually has a partner rotation that they recommend for their public clients.
Well, what is their suggestion?
So I think it's every five years, they have a partner rotation, so the firm actually stays in place. Because you have benefit of having the same firm, you don't have to reteach, you know, brand-new auditors, but you change the shareholder. So in, in getting that fresh set of eyes, you do it...
Fresh ideas.
Yeah, through, through a, through a partner rotation. So the very first partner, I think I would be, I would have been the third partner on this engagement.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I want to ask one, just to revisit the finding of an exception for the approval process for items being posted to the general ledger. Were you able to identify, is that something that's been going on over a period of time? We just didn't notice that last year? Or is that some new process that was put in place that maybe took a two-step approval out, or, or what happened there?
No, and, and I should have meant that we, we, I should have mentioned that we didn't find any errors related to capital assets. But because the activity has grown so substantial, it, it's, it's more complex than it once was. So we thought it rose to that level of being mentioned in the audit report.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right now, we're now down to the County Administrator's Report. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, the first item I have is continuing essentially with our finances, the quarterly report. Council was, sent a copy of our quarterly report on January 12th. I haven't heard any questions from Council. There was nothing in the quarterly report that was outstanding or, or out of line. Everything was pretty much where it should be. But if you do have any questions with that, please let myself or Laura know.
All right.
Next, we're going to have a report from Denise Bryan, our airport director. Denise is relatively new to us, and we're making a lot of changes at the airport, and she's going to give Council a presentation going over some of the...
Real quickly, if we could please take the conversations out of the room. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Council. This will be my first presentation here on your airport, and I call it "Your Airport" because it belongs to everybody, and it's a jewel of your county. The airport, we're trying to make it a professional place that you can go to for professional services with a small county airport feel. Okay, next slide. I'm the new airport director. I've been here for seven months. I started July 10th under W.K. Dixon as an interim airport director with, as a contractor. I was hired with the county November 20th as the airport director. Next slide. One of the first things we did at the airport was, there was a, a private residence trailer that was on the property. This trailer was requested to be moved by the FAA so that we would be able to maintain our federal and state funding that we receive for our airport, which is very important to maintain all the safety features and everything that we do at your airport. Next slide. Some of the safety issues that were addressed at the airport, specifically on the airfield, would have been some things like grass height. A lot of people don't know how important grass height is on your airfield. I know everybody's heard of the birds, birds around the airport is not a good thing. Everybody's heard about the geese on the Hudson and that type of thing, but especially the small aircraft that are here at your airport is specifically important. The grass height should be between six and 10 inches. That, it, it's not supposed to look like a golf course out there. And they were cutting the grass extremely low, which was actually attracting birds to your airfield. When you cut it, they're after food, water, and places to live. And that's exactly what you were providing for. So there was a lot more bird activity out there about seven months ago. Wildlife, you have coyote and fox out on your airfield. The perimeter fence prevents a lot of that, but a lot of it can be detoured by trapping. And we have been placing some traps out with the assistance of the animal control officers here in the county. The lighting, a lot of it is very old. Luckily, we are getting ready to do a new project out on the airfield and replace all of the lights and signage on our airfield. So we will be in excellent condition in a couple of months. There was a lot of damaged lighting, but we now have a contract with a company called Walker Whiteside, and they are contracted to come out. After we replace all of our lighting and all of our signage on the airfield, they will actually maintain our airfield lighting. Yes, sir?
Just one question real quickly. Are you referring to overhead lighting or lighting along the runway and, and that type of lighting as well?
On the airfield itself, yeah.
It's been very long since we did that.
The airfield lighting out there, I don't know how long it's been out there, but it's extremely old.
Might want to make sure we didn't pay to have that done.
Well, you may be talking about...
Lighting improvements, or at least had paid for some lighting improvements, so...
The PAPPS, which is, PAPPS stands for Precision Approach Path Indicators. They're lighting boxes that help guide you into the runway. Now, that's a new piece of equipment out there. That's part of the lighting set. Now, that's not going to be replaced. That was replaced. That's relatively new. There were some new lights put in when you extended the runway, but everything else was old. So there are portions of it that are newer, but they were still old-style lighting. All of the new lighting and the new signage are all going to be LED, which is fabulous. We're also going to replace the beacon on top of the beacon, and I'll show you a picture here in just a minute of the new one. And also, we're going to try to replace our old windsock assembly.
Just as an aside, I, I, just since we mentioned that beacon, I actually had a relative shoot it out at one time, so if you need to help with replacing it.
Everybody wants to buy that light, by the way. I could probably sell it very easily. Okay, this is just a picture of some of the damaged lighting that we had, and you can see the old-style lighting that on the ground. Next slide. There was a lot of issues with the grass growing up through the pavement. Next year's projects, one of the priorities that I have moved up in the federal funding is to try to get our pavement rejuvenated. But that will be next year, and we can discuss that a little bit later. But you can see where the grass was growing up through the pavement cracks. There's a before and after pictures of a couple of different places on the ramp. Okay, next picture. This is how we have addressed some of the, the issues for the wildlife. That picture over there is a bird banger. It's just an audible gun with poppers that, that if you continually use it, the birds won't come back. That picture, you may not be able to see them, but when I first came out here about seven months ago, we had flocks of geese. A goose can cause, especially to small aircraft, a lot of damage. And we had about six to 10 geese that transitioned from some water areas in the county. They did stop coming back, but hopefully, next year, in the same season when they usually come back, we will have the ability to detour them. Okay, next picture. We put some new tie-down ropes, which was very appreciated by some of the people coming in. You tie down your aircraft when you come in, and if there's not any tie-down ropes, sometimes you're a little leery about leaving your airplane on the ramp. Next picture. A lot of the, the fire safety issues on the airfield that we took care of were pretty simple ones. You can see the box to your left. This is our emergency fuel shut-off box, where you shut off the, the emergency fuel if something catches on fire. Obviously, you can see, you couldn't see it very well. It's supposed to be bright red. And we painted that box and put brand-new stickers on it, and this will be replaced when we replace the fuel pumps, but it looks much better and it's visible now. Next picture. We did prepare a director's office. I have an office that can be secured there at the airport, and we took over all of the hangars. The, the county is now responsible for all the hangars. I have access to all the hangars, and all the keys are in my office secured. Okay, next. The general aesthetics of the airport terminal itself are much better. The whole terminal building has been painted interior. The floors look fantastic. The bathrooms have been recaulked, the, all the new faucets. In the pilot's lounge, we have new computer and a new printer for the pilots to access the internet and get weather, and also new blinds in the pilot's lounge. So it's starting to look really professional. It's, it's a place that a business would want to come in and bring their jet into. And next picture. One of the first things that I did was I worked with Mr. Davis and Mr. Taylor to write our new hanger lease. The hanger leases were very old, and they didn't address some of the issues that needed to be addressed as a lease or of the hangars, specifically the insurance requirements. I did get a lot of questions from the tenants, you know, things like, "We're a small county airport, you know, we don't have to do those things. We haven't ever done those things." But as things move along in the future, you know, things have to change, especially in the legality part of it as a leaser. And eventually, we got everybody to sign and become compliant. Okay, next. We attempted to recruit airport commissioners for the Aeronautics Commission. We are, I think, becoming successful now. We're getting the word out that we need some, some people that are interested in aviation, and we obviously had to apply this evening and approved. And next. This is a display that is in the main terminal building. It's a large TV monitor, and it displays the automatic weather that is displayed to pilots. Originally, when they came into the terminal, they had to go into a little room and pull it up on a computer about this big. Now, this is in the main lobby, and it displays all the important information that a pilot would want to know. Wind direction, ceilings, visibility, the Zulu time, everything, and all the pilots love it. Okay, next. This is our beacon. It has been refurbished, it's been painted, and the, all the painting was part of the project that's coming up. We included it in the lighting and signage project that's going to start the end of this month. And the beacon will be replaced during that next project. So, next. Okay. This is a cable that holds up our hanger doors. Our hanger doors are 42 by 14, and they weigh 2,000 to 3,000 pounds each. We're lucky that nobody was hurt and no aircraft was damaged. That was one of the cables that was holding one of those doors up. As far as I know, the hangled, hanger doors had never been inspected. So we had a company, a professional door, company come out and inspect those doors. We now pay them $400 a year to come out and inspect the doors, and they will repair anything that they find. So we got a lot of hanger doors recabled and some limit switches on those doors replaced. So now we have safe hanger doors. Okay, next. We have two drive-through gates at the, at the airport. Obviously, an airport perimeter is secured for safety reasons. You don't want people just driving out there and, and getting hurt or the pilots getting hurt. So these secured gates had punch code key, keypads, and they, from what I understand, they were continuously getting hit, and they just put them back up. We added the, the safety poles to each gate, and now they're a lot more secure and damage-free. Next. Okay, NDB is a non-directional beacon. It is a piece of equipment that's used for navigation. When you're coming in for landing, it, it sends out a beacon so that when an airplane comes in, you can kind of find the runway in poor or bad weather. It's a very old piece of equipment. A lot of airplanes don't use it anymore, and as a matter of fact, airplanes aren't even made with them in there anymore. If you buy a new aircraft, it doesn't have an NDB in it. I did a poll of all of our tenants, flight instructors, people that I know professionally in the, in the business, and found out that one person out of everybody I polled uses an NDB. We can save, or we, we are saving $2,100 a year maintenance on this NDB. I had it decommissioned January 1st. You have to hold an FCC license for it. That was costing, plus the $2,100 in maintenance. So we're going to save all of that money, and the NDB is no longer... There's a lot of new equipment. Everybody's heard of the GPS approaches. They are not authorized for approaches, but we do have a GPS approach. And we also have, we don't have a VOR. There's another type of approach that we have, but we have several to replace the NDB during poor weather. It, we, we, it's no loss that we don't have the NDB approach anymore. Okay, next slide. We had the South Carolina Breakfast Club. The South Carolina Breakfast Club is a group of pilots that have breakfast once a month at, at different airports in the state of South Carolina to promote general aviation at all the South Carolina airports. We have the Breakfast Club at our place the Sunday after Thanksgiving every year. Brian with SNS Aviation... Um, Brian with SNS Aviation, he has always done a fantastic job with the Breakfast Club. So, I'll, we, um, let him continue to do that. He was still willing, you know, and wanted to do that. Um, and he did a great job with the county's help. We, we got tables and chairs for him, had him brought in. And we had 48 airplanes come into our airport that afternoon, and about 80 to 90 people had breakfast at our airport, which was great for our airport. And it helped us sell a lot of the fuel to empty the tanks that we had to empty. Okay, next slide. Um, the airport has received one to two jets a month, which is pretty good for a little general aviation airport. Um, this picture here is a G4, a Gulfstream 4, which is a rather large airplane. Um, I was so excited when it came in. I was out there just clicking away. Um, it's, it needs the 5,000-foot runway that we have. It uses every foot of that runway, but it, it can get into our little airport. This company, um, came in to look at a building, a prospect in Fairfield County, which is exactly what we want. And when they came in, I think that they were very pleased with our little airport. So, I think we're moving in the right direction with that. Okay, next slide. Um, you may not be able to see what this, this is a semi-truck, um, with a load of supplies on it. Um, for our airfield lighting and signage project, our supplies have started coming in. February 21st is the, um, the date that we're going to start mobilizing. Next. I'm sorry, can you go back to that one slide before? Um, one of the things that I did want to tell you about our project, um, originally, we were supposed to close the runway 30 to 45 days. We have three businesses, basically, that work out of the airport. We have a maintenance facility, an avionics facility, and a flight school. Um, those would suffer greatly. Um, not, not to mention that we wouldn't be able to have pilots come into our airport. But for 30 to 45 days, that's a long time. Um, we renegotiated that. Rather than being closed 30 to 45 days, seven days a week, we are only going to be closed 30 to 45 days, Monday through Friday. Most of our flyers are weekend VFR flyers. So, the fact that we were able to renegotiate that caused us not to have to relocate some of our tenants. As a matter of fact, only one tenant says he wants to relocate his airplane during that time, um, which also allows us not to have to waive hanger rent for that month. So, that was, that's a great thing. Okay, next slide. Um, we are using a 1,000-gallon temporary fuel truck right now. Our fuel tanks are shut down. Um, they have been emptied, and the fuel has been disposed of. We are going to be removing our tanks out of the ground next week. And we have a professional company that we've contracted, an Enviro Consulting Company, that's going to be coming in. And we're going to save a lot of money because we're going to use our Public Works Department to excavate the tanks. So, we've had a meeting. Next slide. Uh, that's not there yet. Uh, we had a meeting with county employees that will be involved in this event on January 10th. Um, I think it went very well. Public work was there, um, our maintenance facility guys were there, um, Mr. Davis and Mr. Taylor were there. Um, so, we're going to be able to save about $10,000 with having our guys excavate these tanks out. So, if everything goes well, everything comes back well, we'll, we'll be doing great. Um, on January 5th, the fuel was, was removed. And there's some numbers on that, um, that film right there. I'm not going to go through those numbers. But, um, I think we were all very surprised, um, that we were able to get rid of most of the fuel. Um, a lot of the things that we did, we contacted some, um, companies that wanted to buy huge amounts of our JDA, which we thought we would be stuck with. We sold it at a discount price. Therefore, we only had to pay the difference between the discounted price and the cost of the fuel to the, to the FBO that we had to pay for the fuel because he has to replace it. Um, so, it ended up costing us $290.22 to have the fuel pumped out and disposed of. Next slide.
Let me, let me ask a question, if I may, on that. Now, thank you very much, Ms. Brian, for bringing that up. I'll direct this to Mr. Taylor, uh, because this had come up in the past, and I'd ask a question about it. Um, so, you just mentioned that, that we ended up paying $290, um, for this, to remediate this. We did also have some penalty fees that we had to pay, the amount of about $9,000, if I can remember.
That is correct.
Correctly. And who was overseeing the, um, the fuel tanks at, at the time that it was found? That, that we had not had them permitted or whatever the issue was?
I think it actually goes past Mr. Steed. He was there during that period, but I think it actually began prior to him.
Okay. You knew where I was going. Thank you.
Okay. Um, next slide, please. So, the fuel tank removal and installation, I've already gone through, um, that process. So, we're going to start, start doing that next week. You can see the picture there, um, of those particular tanks. That's in Orangeburg. And I'm, I'm going to try to take Mr. Davis and Mr. Taylor, if he'd like to go. We're going to look at some tanks. But that's kind of the tank, um, layout that we're, we're looking at right now. They're above ground. Yay. Um, and they have a canopy, and the dispenser is on the end of the tanks. Okay, next. Um, there's some documents that are in front of you. Um, I attended the South Carolina Aviation Association last week. Made a lot of good contacts, met a lot of good people with, um, different county councils, um, airport directors, and learned a lot. And I brought you some documents. That document, um, Mr. Billy, that you're holding in your hand, is prepared specifically for Fairfield County Airport by the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. Um, that, that started prior to me. Um, they collected a lot of information. And it, um, it gives you some idea of what kind of economic impact general aviation airports have on your counties in South Carolina and inside specifically, um, on Fairfield County. And I actually think that the numbers are low. After I looked at them, I, I, I really believe that our economic impact is more than what they're implying. Um, but, you know, maybe next year. Is there any questions?
Questions or comments, Ms. Brian? Ms. Goins.
I want to say first, thank you so much. And, um, the collaboration and work that's being done with Fairfield County together to build our airport is awesome. And I encourage you to keep up the good work, you and the team. I encourage Fairfield County to get on board. This is exactly what we need to move forward in the direction that we're going. And, uh, I don't do the flying. I came out many years ago and saw the airport. And then, Mr. Davis brought me out last year to do a, uh, look around. But I'm definitely going to make a bad business to get back out there now.
Please do. Please do. Everybody come out and see your airport.
Thank you.
Mr. Roof.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for what you're doing. This is a, a great turnaround from what the airport has been in the past. And we're just so glad to have you because it is very important to the county and the economic growth of our county. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If you're going to throw away that old windsock, I want it.
You got it.
Any other questions, comments, Ms. Brian? Ms. Brian, thank you very much again. I think we're doing a good job, uh, Ms. Brian and, and administration staff as well, improving the professionalism in our airport.
The next item I had listed, uh, was Mrs. Barbara Wilder and Mr. Gary Wilder from Perfect Provisions. Uh, they had requested to speak tonight concerning their mobile soup kitchen. But they did send their regrets at the last minute, and they're not going to be here. And hopefully, we can reschedule them to come, uh, speak about the good work they do later. The next item I have is a request of action from Fairfield County EMS. Um, we do find ourselves in a situation, as was referred to earlier, of being down in our staff again. And, and we're, this is much the case because our surrounding counties are increasing their salaries and increasing their recruiting. Uh, so, we do have a request from EMS, uh, to do a salary adjustment. I think currently, we're down, again, nine employees, nine paramedics, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
And what's being proposed is, um, the EMT salary to go from 8.65 an hour to 9.85. The base paramedic to go, to go from 13.42 to 15.81. A sergeant to go from $14.77 to $17.60. A lieutenant to go from 16.11 to 18.50. A captain to go from 17.45 to $19.39. Overall, this would have an impact of $357,000 on our budget. This has been presented to the Finance Committee, and they have recommended it to full council. And we do have Mr. Mike Tanner, who will be going, uh, into further detail and answer any questions council may have.
Good evening, council. Um, I'm pretty sure everybody saw Richland County, what they went through here recently. They were put through the wringer by all the news media because they had a severe shortage in staff. They were underfunded. They had long response times. They had some management issues. Luckily, we don't have that. And deaths. I mean, because that's what happens when you're actually short paramedics. Um, what did they do to change it? They got a 10% raise. The last time I came to you guys, we bumped up our guys, and it brought us within 10%. But now, of course, they've gone up another 10%. Um, the reason they did that, I'll go into that in just a little bit, is they're, they, they need to fill the positions they have. Plus, they know they were understaffed, so they were going to add 48 new positions. There's not 48 paramedics in this state to be had. So, where are they going to get them from? That's, that's my concern, being only 20 miles away. Um, just the other day, our, um, we, we, uh, attended the South Carolina EMS Association meeting. They're doing, they're continuing with the task force. As you can see here, there's a statewide task force put in place because there is a critical shortage of EMS personnel statewide. Not just in this county, not in, just in Richland, Lexington. It's statewide. And I'll go into some of the things we're doing to try to combat that on a local level as well. How's that going to affect us? Of course, there's that shortage. Most of our employees live out of the county. Um, Richland County's hiring 48 people, and they're starting their paramedics now 19% above what we are. 75% of our employees live outside of this county. So, we must be doing something right to get those people to drive 30 miles to begin with. But that, we can't compete right now with that marketplace that they're, they're creating. But as you can see, you know, the majority of our, uh, employees come from Lexington, Lexington and Richland County. Uh, we were asked, you know, if we looked at counties our size, we don't compete with counties our size. We compete with the contiguous counties of Fairfield County. And our biggest competitors are Richland, Lexington, Lancaster. Uh, I've never lost anybody to, uh, Chester, and we compete with Newberry. Um, what's happening? We've had to shut, shut down substations. And when that happens, that's, that increases response times. And that has some definite potential negative patient care impacts and a possible loss of our ALS care. It was mentioned that we don't need paramedics in the trucks. We could run it with, uh, BLS trucks. I'll show you the impact that has on this county. Uh, loss of the Foley Man extrication unit. There's only one extrication truck in this county, and that's manned by our captain. Once that captain has to get on the ambulance because we're short-staffed, there's not a professional technical rescue person in this county at that point. So, in other words, it's 100% dependent on rescue squad to come out and cut somebody out of a car, get them out of a ditch, rope rescue, high-angle rescue, any kind of technical rescues based solely on volunteers. Why do we have to do this? Uh, we live under DEHAC regulations. They, they are our regulatory agency, and that's Regulation 61-7. And if you look at 61-7, 406, subsection A, if we're to maintain our ALS license, we have to have a paramedic, not just an EMT, but a paramedic on the truck 95% of the time. We run 4,400 calls. Do the math, 5% of 4,400. There's not many calls that we can send a basic truck to, to maintain that certification. What difference does that make? I pulled four of our normal calls that we run on a daily basis, weekly basis. And I wanted to show you the massive impact that this has between a BLS service and an ALS service. And anybody with any medical knowledge knows this is not some far reach of the truth. This is, this is fact. So, uh, let's say you have somebody with severe allergic reaction. That happens all the time. If you send a BLS crew, they're going to put them on O2 and haul butt because that's all they can do. The patient airway is going to swell up, it's going to occlude, and the patient dies. You send a paramedic to that truck, the ALS that we want to maintain, they put them on O2, they give them medications, IV, sub-Q, IM. They give them breathing treatments. We might not even have to transport that patient. That's a massive difference between death and not even transporting. That's what I want to get through to you guys, the massive difference between BLS and ALS. Car wreck, everybody can relate to this. Same, BLS. Um, they have fractured ribs, punctures along. There's air that builds up in the thoracic cavity. BLS crew can do nothing to save that patient. Paramedic, they perform what they call attention pneumo with RHD compression. That patient's saved, that patient's stabilized, and taken to, uh, have surgery. And they're the only people in this county in EMS that can provide pain management. So, if you guys are out there and you break something, the, the paramedic is the only person that can administer any kind of pain medication.
Mr. Tanner.
Yeah.
So, is fair to say that BLS is not a paramedic on the truck, ALS is a paramedic?
That is, that is correct.
Can you explain what BLS stands for and ALS stands for?
Yeah. BLS is Basic Life Support. And that's when you have EMTs. There's no advanced, there's no IVs, there's no medications, there are no defibrillations. There's no innovations, there's no chest tubes. There's, there's no invasive procedures done. ALS is Advanced Life Support, which we currently hold and which only a paramedic can render.
But you can qualify for ALS with one paramedic on the truck, right? You don't have to have two?
You got to have one paramedic on the truck 95% of the time. That is correct. Yep. Um, same way with a heart attack. Everybody knows, um, BLS, they're going to take you to the ER. Hopefully, you know, they'll get you seen quickly down there. They'll get the test run, and then you make it to the cath lab probably two hours later. But half of your heart muscle just died. ALS, we have the capabilities, that paramedic did do an EKG in the back of that truck, transmitted to Richland before we leave their house. And that cath lab team is put on standby and prepped. They know we're coming with a MI. We take them straight to the cath lab, and then they walk out the next day. Well, it's, it's awesome. And only a paramedic can do that. And diabetic, BLS, they can do nothing but that, for that patient, but put them in the back of the truck, haul butt to Richland, and hopefully, they don't die and they have permanent brain damage. Paramedic, they can treat them on the scene and actually leave them there. I mean, we can fix that within one to two minutes. That's the huge difference between BLS and ALS. That's why it's imperative we have paramedics in the back of the truck.
Let me ask you that. Some of those things, those are all, I guess, all regulated by DEHAC, correct?
That's correct. We go strictly by, we have to follow everyone of Regulation 61-7, which is in the DEHAC Regulation Code of EMS.
So, with the shortage in the state, um, do you know if, and you may not know this, and I know it's not something that's really germane to you, but do you know if there's any effort at legislature anywhere to revise some of those requirements?
This is their new revision. They just put these in place last year. So, uh, what they're, their intent was to try to keep, um, people from having lower levels of care and not having a driver and an EMT show up, or two EMTs show up because they know the, the importance of advanced life support care. They know that makes the difference between life and death. How does that affect us? You know, we cover 700 square miles. You can see here, you know, if we were down one truck, that, that square mileage that those units that we have available grows exponentially. So, you can see, when we're short, we, we're covering 233 square miles per truck. And that's a lot of area. And of course, that's going to impact the, the, uh, response times. I want, I want to show you guys, uh, a graphic here about when we were fully staffed, um, when we were down one truck, when we were down two trucks, when we were down three trucks. Uh, we run six trucks every day. So, six trucks is our, our, um, best-case scenario here. So, in November, you know, we had nine days. We had, we're fully staffed. We had 16 days, we were down one truck, and we had five days, we were down two trucks. December, it got a little bit worse. We were down, we were fully staffed five days. We had one truck down for 16 days, and we had two trucks down for eight days. And in January, we were fully staffed for one day. That means that an area in Fairfield County was uncovered for 29 or 30 days of the 31 days. Uh, we were, we're that short staffed now. And you can see, we, 14 and a half days, we're five stations, 14 and a half days, four stations. And we have two half-days, which of course is one day, that we were down to three trucks in the county.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
When, when you're down like that, is it safe, say, lower-ranking staff is, is the cause of it because we don't have it, or?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, yeah. When we don't have, because we could, we could put a driver and an EMT out there. But... but if we do that more than 5% of the time, we lose that ALS license and we drop back to a BLS, which this county, I never want to see that happen. And you can see, the majority of our calls go out of the county. So, every time that one truck goes out, there's an area uncovered for at least two hours. And you can see, the most of our transports go to Palmetto, Richland, and then Fairfield is second on the list, because Palmetto Heart and Palmetto, Richland, they're the same. But some go straight to the heart center that we talked about. And I recognize those calls I went over, those four calls I went over, I wanted to see how often that happened. We had 720 calls that those four calls fell into that category. So, that'd be 720 people that would fall under that BLS problem we had. That's a lot.
Mr. Tanner, on that previous slide, and I'm having a hard time seeing it.
Okay.
What's the percentage of calls that you transport outside the county?
It's about 55, 58% go outside the county.
Due to the patient requesting to go, correct?
Correct. Yeah. There's, well, there's several factors. There's patient request, there are certain medical conditions that they're mandated to go, and that's state law, that's state protocol, and their trauma protocols, and stroke and STEMI protocols, that they don't have a choice. Now, if the patient is stable, and we'll give them a choice of the closest appropriate medical facility within 50 square miles. All right. Some of the stuff we're doing besides just, you know, asking to throw money at it all the time, this is something new for us. Used to, we had certified people lined up. That's not the case anymore. There's a critical shortage. So, what have we done? First thing we did was reinstate our Explorer post. I'm very excited about this. We have over 20 of our youth already signed up for this. We hit Richmond, we hit Fairfield Central, we hit the vocational schools, we hit the homeschoolers, we flooded emails, we flooded schools, and we have over 20 of those guys signed up already. And I think this is going to be one of our biggest solutions to this problem, but that's long-term. It takes three years after that person turns 18 to get them to a paramedic level. So, this is a long-term solution. So, now, we're not just thinking short-term, we're thinking long-term as well. We've instituted a mentoring program with the school system, more homegrown employees. That's going to help us out tremendously. Like I said earlier, 75% of our people are outside of this county. We already have the best equipment in the state. You guys have given us the best ambulances, the best substations. That's a huge recruiting tool. That's why we have so many people coming from other counties to here. And hopefully, we'll continue to make that happen. And we got some of the best work scheduling benefits. The biggest thing is keep up with competitive pay market. And I wanted to use this time to even hit the Explorer post more. So, if you guys know anybody, any kids out there from 14 to 20 that's at least in the ninth grade, send them our way. I mean, we can give the youth of this county a solid career. They could get out making solid money and work in this county, you know, as soon as they turn 18 years old. State law, they have to be 18 to be EMT. But if you know anybody, we've got an open house on February 22 at EMS headquarters. Send them our way. We'd love to have them, you know, join in, because these guys are covered under the Explorer post program by the Boy Scouts of America. So, they can ride with us. They can see what goes on. They can have hands-on training and stuff, so they can really, really get a good grasp of what EMS truly is. What's different from us than Richland or Lexington County? We don't have any tertiary care facility. Our guys do twice as much as the paramedics in Richland or Lexington. They don't do any technical rescue. Their treatment modalities and their medications are half of ours. They don't do any technical rescue, rescue, extrication, remote rescue. They get to a scene of an entrapment, they wait for Columbia Fire Department or Richland County Fire Service to bring them to them. They don't have to do that. We do. We have to do all the technical rescue with the help of the Fairfield County Fire Department volunteers and with the volunteers from the rescue squad. We don't have the manpower and backup that they do. We have to carry specialized equipment that no other EMS service has to carry because our transports are longer, and we do so many more procedures like rapid sequence intubation that Richland or Lexington County doesn't do. And we do emergent and facility transports. They don't ever have to do that. So, it comes down to pay. I know we did, we looked at, you know, pay around us and pay who we compete with. Now, if you look here in the gray, that's Richland County's pay before their 10% raise that they just got. The orange is Lancaster County, and the blue is Fairfield County. If you look, you know, you'll see there's a massive difference between Richland and us. And if you look at the yearly salary, Lancaster and Richland are pretty much neck and neck, but you'll see we're here. But if you look at that last bit, that's the hours we have to work. We work 14 hours more a week than a Richland County or Lexington County employee, but we get paid 19% less. Lancaster County, they work the same schedule as we do, so it's, that's, you know, we're measuring apples as apples on that one because they work the same amount. But how do we see if this was true? We got paychecks, because we looked, we looked at the, I called HRs, I called Lexington County, I called Richland County, and I got numbers that didn't match with the actual paychecks. And I wanted concrete proof of what these guys were making. This guy right here says, no doubt he'll come with us if we can get this. This is another paramedic. We have him on board. Last year, I know you can't read this, but I got copies for everybody. He made $65,000 last year at Richland County as a new paramedic. And that's before the 10% raise. And on their website, I've got a copy of the website, too. He's, he got 10%, brought him up to $2392. And then he's eligible for 5% after three months, and then he's eligible for another 5% once he gets senior paramedic. And that's with no rank. That's not sergeant, lieutenant, or captain. And these two Lancaster County people that I've got here, both of their paychecks, both of these were actually Fairfield County EMS employees. They left and went to Lancaster County. They left here making under 40, and both of them made over 70 last year. One made 72, one made 73. And I've got their hourly rates broken down as well. This is the one that is one of our employees. Michelle Green is the blue. She is an EMT. She's a new EMT. And her husband is the orange. They both started the same week. He started Lexington County, she started Fairfield County. She's making $896 an hour. He's making $17 an hour. She's making $29,000 a year. He's making $39,000 a year. But she's working 720 hours more a year than he does. And that's not conjecture. Here's his paycheck. This is straight from her husband. And of course, we have her paycheck. We know what she gets paid. She's a Fairfield County employee. So, that's the research we did. And one thing that I would just, wanted to remind everybody that, you know, I kind of lose sight of it, and everybody else does, is we're a unique county department because, if you look at the highlighted number right there, we generated $1,072,000. So, in other words, that's a third of our budget. There's not another county department that generates revenue that, you know, goes to offset the taxpayers' cost. And most of that money came from Medicare and private insurance. That's a million dollars that we brought in last year. Any questions?
I have one. It seems to me if we made it competitive a year ago, that employees are searching for the highest-paying job.
That is correct.
If we grant it now, what's to say a year from now, we're not back in the same situation that we're in now?
There's no guarantee. And the way I look at it, the way I like to think, I'm a firm believer that you get what you pay for. And I think every citizen of Fairfield County deserves the best shot at life by getting the top quality paramedic to come save them in their medical or trauma crisis.
I agree, but my main concern is the dedication to Fairfield County. Do we do sign-on bonuses? Do we do longevity for staying in the county to offset the cost of raising the salaries up?
Well, that's why we look, these long-term solutions, because a lot of people don't realize, we don't just compete against Richland County, Lexington County. I've got a brochure right here, right off the DEHET website, private service offering a $20,000 sign-on bonus for a paramedic. And then a $10,000 sign-on bonus for EMTs. So, yeah, there's other factors we have to take into consideration to combat these things. That's why we're trying to get more homegrown people to dedicate to Fairfield County. And I think we have that long-term solution in place, and this will bridge that gap until we can get to that long-term solution, especially with the Explorer post and getting these homegrown youth involved.
Any other questions, comments, council members? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Question or?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this until we gather a little further information, because what I'm looking at proposed isn't what I actually agreed to.
Okay. At the committee level, you mean? Do we have a second on that motion? Okay. Do we have any discussion on that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. I need to read back what we decided. The finance committee, read back what we...
I don't have those minutes, councilman, in front of me. Patty, do you have access to those minutes?
All right. Any other discussion?
What we done, council, we broke it down to the hourly rate. Mike, you have the, what we discussed in the committee?
Yeah, yeah, I've got what we discussed in the committee meeting. And there's, yeah, yeah. I'll get it right here. Let me pull it up. I think, I think what you're talking about, the discrepancy is there, is it was broken down into two different categories, because those numbers haven't changed whatsoever. The two different ones were what was going to cost initially. And then, the other part that would make it to the other number was for the contingency for new hires on to that, on to that number. So, I got it somewhere. Because it's still, it's still the same. That hasn't changed from what was approved in the finance committee of the 272 with the contingency of the, do you have that, Mr. Taylor?
I'm looking for it.
Yeah, because I got it somewhere. Because that number is still the same. No numbers have changed as far, here it is. That number that we used in the finance committee was 272, 939, 86, plus an additional 83, 988. So, but what Mr. Taylor stated was just both of those put together. So, that's the only, that's the only difference, was they were just added together. What he stated was the cost. The cost has not changed. This is exactly what we presented in the finance committee of the 272, 939, and the 83, 988 for the non-current vacancies.
What was it you needed? What would you need? He's here now, and you can ask him what you need.
I'm looking at the proposed increase, and I'm not quite comfortable with it just yet. I think we need to revisit it.
Let me ask this question, if I may. Mr. Robinson, is your concern with the, you know, you and I had discussed this in brief before the meeting. Is your concern with the, not the EMTs and the paramedics per se, but the other folks in more leadership positions in the department?
That's correct. What I was concerned about, if we lose an EMT and paramedics, first of all, let me back up. Throwing money at EMTs is only plugging holes. That's what we doing. And if we continue to throw money, let's start where we needed that the most first. Let's do that.
And just also say, I made a personal phone call to Lexington County and got some salaries of paramedics and EMTs and captains and lieutenants. And their figures were substantially less than the figures that the finance committee gave to me. So, at this time, I would recommend also to carry it over to get more information before we make a decision on this.
Let me ask this question. Mr. Tanner, what have we done? I think we've done the proper work based off discussion here tonight and in the Finance Administration Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago to vet the salaries and pay of some of the folks that are beyond EMT or paramedics, the sergeants, lieutenants, captains. I just wonder, I'm sorry, that was backward. We've vetted everybody else. Have we done anything to make sure that we're remaining on pace with the folks who are in those higher positions as well?
Yeah. I made a phone call yesterday to the director of Lexington County EMS, and he states unequivocally that his paramedics, none of them make less than $60,000 a year, not compared to what the salary book, of course, says. And he's the one in charge of payroll. He's the one in charge of that budget. And I've known him for years and years. There's no reason for him to give me false information, especially when we might be a competitor as far as taking people away from him. And as far as, you know, the people we giving raises to, you know, up top, I'm getting half of what the paramedics are at the bottom. And I maintain there needs to be a separation between a paramedic in the field to the people with the most, you know, responsibility, because it would behoove me to go back on the street if that's the case, you know, and to have a whole lot less responsibility and make more money. So, I'm looking at less than half of an increase compared to the paramedic in the field, less than half of the increase that we're giving to EMTs. So, I think the numbers that were presented, we're taking that in consideration. And just to let you know, the Richland County director makes $37,000 more a year than I do. So, it's not like we're anywhere close. And that's straight off for you. He makes $107,000 a year. So, I mean, and that wouldn't even, even if I get what we have, which was the least percentage, I'd still be $27,000 less than what he makes. And I'd do the exact same job.
Any other questions or comments? That said, we do have a motion on the floor to postpone this to the next council meeting pending further information. Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think I counted three there. Can we do a hand vote, those in favor? Okay, four of those opposed. Okay, we are, okay, I didn't see you. Four and three that we will postpone that matter until the next meeting. And we'll bring it up, put it on the agenda at that time pending further information on this. All right, moving on. Mr. Taylor, we're down to the next request of action.
Yes. The next request of action I have is from the Fairfield County Transit. They're making a request to change their procurement policy, their procurement manual, to revise it. And the reason they're making this request is we had an onsite review and audit, and DOT, who conducted that audit, has made this request that we bring our procurement code with our transit system in line with the federal procurement code. And that's the paperwork that you have in front of you. And this has been to the Finance Administration Committee and has been reviewed and recommended to full council.
Right. Do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the request of action as stated in revision to procurement manual. Administration and Finance Committee did recommend approval. Any discussion? I'll just say that this was explained to us in the Admin and Finance Committee meeting as something that had been recommended and really required of us. So, just to put that out there. Any more discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. That request of action is approved. Mr. Taylor, explain the next one.
The next one we have is to a request of action from our Parks and Recreation Department to obtain a deed and accept a deed, because it's been offered from the town of Windsboro of the Garden Street Park. This is a baseball field that's, or it's being used as a baseball field right now, and it does have some wooded property to the back. But it's located on Garden Street at the intersection on one side of Drayton and the other of Roosevelt. We can, we're requesting that council allow me to accept and sign a deed on this contingent upon a survey and title search.
All right. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Don't move. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the request as stated. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Request of action is approved as stated. Mr. Taylor?
This is the last item I had. I was going to report that Providence is moving forward. They're expecting to break ground shortly on the new emergency medical facility that they're building. I just want to let council know that they are, again, expecting to break ground shortly. They are having a ceremony, yes.
Thank you very much. We're now down to the clerk of council's report. There is none. A second public comment session. Mrs. Davis? Mrs. Davis?
We have three speakers. First, Peggy Swearingen speaking on firefighters.
Second time, page two, as Paul Harvey would say, because I didn't get to finish last time. Since 1994, what probably averages out to be about $20 million per year, that's $460,000 total at least over the last 23 years, has gone through council's hands. Since December the 16th, we've had out our way seven houses or outbuildings, three cars, one dog, and one person burned up. Really all. It's just the best council can do for us. We have started out with a nice facility in Jenkinsville. We've got two paid firefighters out there. We have got a fire department at Fishterville, and we've got one at Miford. Don't have to build them a place. If you would just find it somewhere to fund us some paid firemen, so we're not going to burn up out there in the bushes, somewhere out there, please consider funding it if you will, if you can find it somewhere. Thank you very much.
Next, Ms. Yvette Howard speaking on economic development, community development.
Good evening, council. I'm Yvette Howard, District 7. And I'm here today to speak on the topics of economic development and community development. It seemed to be a common truth around here that you can't get economic development without community development. Do you not think that businesses and individuals looking to do business in this area will just look at Congress Street and Mount Zion, but not the surrounding neighborhoods, just one block from Congress Street? We are told that we can hold our representatives accountable at the ballot box. What we need is for our representatives to make better decisions in the first place. Waiting four years is too long. Many decisions and actions cannot be undone or corrected once such actions have been taken. We are told that we will do this project first and look at other projects later. This may or may not happen. When we talk about neighborhood and community, we include not just a walking trail, a playground, a office space, but also residential structures, vacant lots, and roadways. Council, I ask that when you take on economic development and community development, don't say, we'll do this project first, and we have plans for other areas later. Community is not just one plot of land. We who live here know that we are one community. We want to be treated as one community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer speaking on common sense.
We'll start the clock when everybody's ready. Good evening, council. Jeff Schaefer, District 4. I miss you, folks. I want you to know that. More importantly, you need to move this thing up so we can get on the camera, wherever that is. And when I watch YouTube at home, I want to be able to see myself, just like I see you folks. That's not important. What is important is this. We are not using common sense. You heard a lot of people tonight come up here and talk to you about their little problems. I don't see most of you, I know that all of you want to do the right thing. All of you do. I get that. I think all of us get that. But take that pen out and make a note so that when someone makes a comment, we see you writing it. This is the peanut gallery. This young lady, Wendy Bracewell, congratulations. I'm your neighbor across the lake, and I sure hope they give you what you want because we do need what you're going to offer. And I don't know if you need to hear that from people like me, but I know Jimmy understands that, and so does Bertha, and all of you understand that. We need people to bring business and have opportunities. So I gave you these pictures. What that is, is the March compound up the street from me, the March family. Their trailer burnt down Saturday night at 11 o'clock. I got a phone call. I was in Florida. Mr. Schaefer, who do I call to get people to come and bring a fire truck? My trailer's burning. I called 45 minutes ago. It was over an hour before they came. We have loss of property and loss of life. How do we, how do we allow that to happen? I pay taxes, we all pay taxes. The thing we pay taxes for is what? What are we paying taxes for? Service. We're not getting it. You've got the EMS man here telling you that he needs more muck. Give it to him. If he's going to get us people to save lives, give it to him. Got the police department here. Give them all police. The things that are important, we should, we're paying for, let's give it to them. And there shouldn't be much discussion about it, to be reality. I mean, it's a no-brainer. I only got 50 seconds left, so I'll make it real quick. There's no reason why it takes 45 minutes or an hour to get a fire truck out. And I don't want to hear it's volunteers, and I don't want to hear that we're stuck out there in the country. Because there's something we've got to do. You've given me two people in the Chankerville Fire Department, thank you very much. Why not take those two guys and separate them so they can cover seven days a week and we got someone driving the truck? You don't need my common sense to tell you how to operate. You guys are smart enough to do all these things. We need protection, and you need to figure out how to do it. Your auditor was up here before. I wanted you to ask him, how much do we pay you to do that? I mean, I know Jimmy's ready to go. Are we bidding him out? Because we should be bidding those things out. And you should hear what they cost us. And last thing, I want to, let me just take a few extra seconds. Defibrillators, two police cars have them. For an emergency thing, every police car should have it. It costs a hundred bucks. Why don't we do that? Give them a defibrillator on every police car. Thank you. Sorry to bother you guys, but.
That concludes segment two.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. We're now down to county council time. Do any council members have anything to share? Mr. Douglas?
Someone, someone has emailed council members except for myself and Chairman Smith. This person seems to say things without finding the truth of what is being said. Wanda Carnes is a good friend of mine, and her husband, Lani, and she are happily married. If this person knows something that Lani should be told, one would be happy to give this person his number.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Goins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I've heard a lot tonight on economic development, community development, and I commend Ms. Bracewell, I want to pronounce your name right, for your vision. I support it 100%. I haven't said much about Western Fairfield. And I'm here, and we've been trying to work things together and trying to do a lot of things. Western Fairfield is undeveloped because of the problems that's in Western Fairfield. And we just might as well put it out on the table. Jenkinsville Water Company is one of those major problems. Developers have tried to come in on many occasions. We could have had great restaurants. We could have had stores. We could have had shops. We could have had jobs for people in Western Fairfield. We even had a family that came from Windsboro, tried to run a business on 213 and 215, and they were pushed out. Jenkinsville Water Company, and I don't believe everybody on there is not the same, but the company operates as, I would say, one of the most corrupt and worst-managed utility services in the state of South Carolina. You can get an 18-year-old from Fairfield Central with business experience and with the right people, and they could turn it around, connected with the town, connected with the county, connected with Newberry, and within two years, we would have development on that side. So when we talk about economic development and building a community, let's include everybody. And let's do it the right way. The lines in the ground out there, I hear them talking about fires, absolutely right. The water system out there is disgraceful. Every time you turn around, the lines are bust. Every time you turn around, you're getting muddy water, you're getting black sediment water. Fire hydrants, that's just out of the question. So I'm going to ask the citizens of Western Fairfield and the Jenkinsville Water Company, give me a call, let's call a meeting, and let's do some changing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Robinson?
I'm sure everybody noticed, Mr. Barber, I'm sorry, Mr. Gary and Barbara Wilder, who run Perfect Provisions, that is actually a mobile soup kitchen. They're new to the area. They deal with basically feeding the needy and helping children. And they're looking to serve the community. Like I said, they're new to the area. I think, I'm not going to speak for them, but Friday the 16th, I think at 5:00 PM, they're wanting to set up at the Old Armory just to feed the needy and get to know people. So I'll probably be posting it later, let citizens know.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, that said, I'll just mention, the sheriff asked if I would mention the, the annual Fairfield County Sheriff's Department Polar Plunge, which is, I believe, this Saturday, February 17th, at Lake Water East State Park. All, all benefits of that go to the Special Olympics. Registration's at 10:00 AM. There'll be a costume contest at 11:00, the plunge at 11:30, and then lunch at 12:00. So just wanted to make folks aware of that. If you would, please go out and support the Special Olympics and the Sheriff's Department with that. Anything else? All right, at this time, we will move on. We have three items for executive session tonight. One is a legal matter. It's an update on litigation against SCENE, S-C-E-N-G, in reference to the abandoned VC Summer New Nuclear Project. Item B is a legal matter. We're going to receive legal advice regarding potential opioid litigation on behalf of Fairfield County. And the third is a proposed contractual arrangement, discussion of that arrangement in association with the rezoning request for property identified as tax map number 138-00-02-045-000. We have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose as stated.
Second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded. The council now go into executive session at this time for the purposes as stated. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven and zero, we're now in executive session.